The one thousand five hundred and fifty fifth regular meeting of order all known come to order. We rise for a present allegiance. Then they call our public board.
The United States of America, the Constitution Republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no beginning and justice for all.
Roll call.
Thank you everybody.
Everybody, yeah. Alright, first sort of big business, we'll. I see a motion for approval to minutes in a March third twenty twenty-three regular meeting. All favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Uh, we'll open up public hearing on an auto repair shop at thirty-seven eleven Geraldine Avenue. Uh, is anybody here from that facility? Hi, step forward, introduce yourself. We'll grow you.
Hi, my name is Aaron Lemison, I'm looking to open up a business called Next Gen Customs at thirty-seven eleven Geraldine Avenue. We do powder coating, window tinting, vinyl wrap, and sandblasting as well. We don't do big scale sandblasting. I remember at the city meeting, I was kind of a big concern, we just do small scale like in a cabinet and everything like that. So, uh, and I do have a spray booth for, excuse me, powder coating as well, so.
Are you from there or I didn't really look?
Uh, no, I'm from Creve Court, but my grandfather, he was, uh, he worked for the city of Saint Anne. In ninety or so, his name was, uh, Jim Case, so he ran for Alderman back then as well, so.
And this used to be an auto repair shop, right? Is it a place where we had a bad luck? Alright, uh, any questions? Alright, well, you.
I see you.
Oh, we got a question, speak up.
I have a couple of reasons about, I think it was on a Sunday maybe afternoon, we all were there, probably cleaning up and stuff.
Oh, I don't recall any of that, we were there cleaning up though, but I.
Yeah, we were there, so. We need to keep an eye out.
Yes ma'am, we did put cameras up, so I can go back and check on that, so.
Yeah, it could have been when you were gone, you know?
Yeah, so, but.
Alright, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, good luck with that.
Thank you.
You're not done yet, I haven't till Lake, Lake over here.
Now wait a minute. I want to thank you for choosing Saint Anne to stay in the Andrew business here, we appreciate it.
Yes sir, pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any upponents? Are there any upponents? Seeing none, let's close the, uh, public hearing on special use permit. I'll now understand a motion for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, good luck young man.
Thank you.
Um, now we need to do appointments. Jan, I'm not gonna try and pronounce the name, De Lorenzo? D-Lor- okay, it's not too bad. Heather Langford to D and Z, and Jan's going on the park board. Um, is any, do you want to speak Heather? Do you just, you know, you don't even say is Jan here too? Speak, aye. Welcome, you don't have to come up, we're fine.
Okay, great.
You get plenty of time to speak at the times. Um, any discussion? Yeah, seeing none, now understand a motion for approval.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Public comment on agenda items, public comment on agenda items. Ed? Good evening, sir.
Evening Mike. A couple of points to ask about on the, uh, grass ordinance.
Yeah.
First off, to clarify, over fifty years, never gotten so much as a warning letter. Okay, so I'm just asking in general for the, for upper everybody. This does not alter the fine, but it also does not clarify the fine. It refers to the nuisance fine of five to five hundred dollars, and my understanding is it's now usually five hundred dollars, is that correct?
I think the bigger, the parcels have gotten the bigger fines, I think smaller was something.
Did you ask about that last?
Well, you asked about the, it was the fee that we charge for cutting the grass. That's the, the, there's, there's two separate things, we, we charge a fee, but we have to go out and cut the grass.
And then we put a lien in.
I meant for the fee as far as cutting grass, it's been fifty bucks, a five hundred dollars.
Right, yeah, that's the, that's the fee for cutting, I was talking about the fine.
Okay, okay, I thought, I thought it was one and the same man.
Which is imposed by the judge.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was one and the same man. That is incredibly punitive on a first time basis. It really should not be anywhere near that high.
For cutting the grass?
For mowing, yes.
And we're not in the mowing business of private property. You know, I've got, I've got staff that has to stop what they're doing and go out and mow their ass. And they spend how many days, Ryan?
Sometimes you're doing it on Saturday, because we don't have time during the week.
And so it's really odd, really bad, hard on our equipment.
And keep in mind, this is, this is for people who refuse to acknowledge and respond to the notifications that they're getting.
Well, what I'm saying, you know, that any one of us is one serious problem or one serious illness away from that.
Well, if you don't, but, but again, it's for people who don't respond. You don't, you get a letter and you just pull it off, we're gonna come and cut your grass if you're gonna get mowed. But if you call, if you say, you call the inspectors, the inspectors are more than willing to work with you. It's a, hey, I need, you know, I've got my grandson, or I've got somebody gonna cut the grass next week, or whatever, can you give me some more time? Bob's guys always do that. This is for people who refuse to even acknowledge that they got a, a notice.
And sometimes they have to send two letters.
We spend more time attempting to notify people and, and that people, that people don't want to, don't want to even give us the courtesy of, of. And keep in mind, Ed, these are properties where, where their neighbors had called us on. You know, and, and, and they don't want to live next door to these people.
Well, I understand the process of there when.
I'm sorry if I'm a little, I'm a little hot under the collar, but I have absolutely no sympathy for somebody who refuses to even pick up the phone and call the inspector and say, hey, look, I've got a problem. And, you know, so dilly-dawling around, you know, making it easy for us to get in the grass cutting business, you know, to service people, that's not what we're here for.
It just seems that that isn't, that is very high for a first time offense, second or, or.
It's not, it's, this isn't the fence, Ed, this is cutting the grass.
I get it.
This is for people who refuse to cut the grass, period.
Fine is determined by the judge.
If they go to court, this is, this is, if they go to court, they have a property maintenance issue, that's determined by the judge. This is a nuisance issue. The grass is considered a public health nuisance. When you have, when you have weeds growing up and grass growing up, that's, that's a public health nuisance.
Some of the lots up I V or Elsberg Bank on lots, I assume, they've got weeds on for years.
Some of those are habitual, I know.
Right, and they deserve.
And that's a different story, I was talking about a first time offense.
I understand.
But you're talking about an offense, and I mean, you're assuming that, you know, so.
A first time occurrence.
So, but, but it's not, it's not, it's not a first time occurrence, it's, it's, they've been, we've attempted to notify them multiple times. This isn't, this isn't, this isn't, we, we send them a letter and the next day we show up and cut the grass.
I understand. However, that brings us to the next point I want to ask about, in this new ordinance, paragraph five states that, uh, without further notification, on second or third and such qualifications.
Right, so, so if we go through the process.
Not even a five day letter?
No, Ed, I mean, why, why do we want to constantly waste our staff time notifying people who refuse to cut their grass on multiple occasions? I mean, you know, I've got a very small staff, and they can't, they can't, they can't be the cheap grass cutting service for somebody who refuses to pick up the grass. Well, I, 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 you know, I mean.
How you ask us the number one complaint that we as Alderman care, like guaranteed?
And again, I want to stress, this is, you know, we don't circle the block, you know, Bob's guys don't circle the block with a measuring tape. You go ahead and get out and, and, oh, their grass is two inches over, you know, I'm gonna slap a notice on it, I'm gonna have Ryan's guys. These are people, these, these houses are people, where people, where their neighbors had called us, begging us to do something because.
They have rodents.
Because they, because, because they got rodents living in the grass because it's so hot. Okay, well. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, this is.
I'm stating my objection.
I, I get it, and, and in a perfect world, everybody would, would, would be more than willing to cooperate and be the good neighbor. But unfortunately, you know, we have, we have, we have a number of, of properties in this town where they know the game. And so, so, so they play the game. I don't have the staff to play the game anymore.
Yeah, I, you make a legitimate point, Ed, but if you live next door to that property, you probably can make it a little bit different, you know?
I do live next door to one that has been in that situation before. And I thought it was incredibly punitive when it happened to him.
Did he call, did he pick up the phone and call us and say, hey, I got a problem?
I do not know.
Well, I mean, that's, that, that's the issue. This isn't, this, again, this isn't for people who, who, who pick up the phone and say, hey, I got a letter, um, you know, I, I broke my leg, I can't cut the grass, or I had a heart attack, or my nephew's coming by next week to cut it. If that happens, inspectors are more than willing to work with them. This is, this is for people who just don't even respond.
Alright, Bob, you got something?
Yeah, uh, and with this ordinance, there are, getting the letter sent for a public hearing option also first. So they can appear for a public hearing, and again, talk to us or anything, and then even after that, it's five days till we.
They're giving, they're, we're giving them the opportunity to come in and plead their case in an industry to hear.
But even, even to add something on that too, Ed, there's several times his kid included at least ten lawns where, where people were called and him or I using our own kids or contacts have, have mowed that.
Okay, that's, that's awesome.
So that's why I want people, you know, wanting them to know, has to see any way of helping people out until what Matt, what we're just talking about. There are people, I guarantee that that person did not call up here, because we definitely, Ryan, Bobby, or I would have known.
I understand we have neighbors helping neighbors, I've done that.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
And quite frankly, the year my son died, I had no idea I'd mowed my lawn.
Right, I did.
Okay.
I did, and then, and then, and then I think that's important that that neighbor was having that problem, knowing you, and you were going through a lot of that time to make sure that you're, you know, to reach out or somebody would reach out to, because we're the first people to always help like that, that's, that's important.
I've said my piece.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak on agenda items? Does anybody else wish to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, move on to introduction bills and resolutions. First reading bill number thirty-four hundred, in ordinance authorized in directing the issuance of sale and delivery of twelve million three hundred thousand principal amount of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-three, in the city of Saint Anne, Missouri. Prescribing the form and details of such bonds, providing for the levy and collection of the annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal off and interest of the bonds, on the bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Second reading bill number thirty-four hundred, in ordinance authorized in directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of twelve million three hundred thousand principal amount, general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-three, of the city of Saint Anne, Missouri, prescribing the form and details of such bonds, providing for the levy and collection of the annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal off and the interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Discussion, I see Joy's out there, somebody's got some questions for Joy. Joy, you want, thank God. I think everybody just wants to know how the market's doing, can you predict that? We're locked in?
Yeah, we're locked in, and, uh, the markets did improve a little bit over, since I was here last.
That's good.
So, um, your debt.
Maybe we should wait.
Your debt service is fairly comparable to what we've been estimating as we went, but you, uh, received some additional proceeds uh, at the same price, basically. So, uh, I don't know if you want to know those exact amounts, but I think, I think Matt.
Yeah, I just.
Passed out numbers to everyone, so you can, you can look at those. But yeah, good news, um, the sale was successful, and, uh, we're done, and you've got the final documents, and we don't have to worry about rates anymore.
Well, that's great, turned out good, that's, that's a good day.
Are you too ready to ask if the, uh, bonds are gonna be sold out and, and how much they're gonna pay as far as the bond?
Uh, if you look at the schedules that Matt gave, there's, uh, showed, it shows the interest rates and the underlying yields, and most of the bonds did already sell. Um, Angela is here from Armstrong Cheese, so she's your bond attorney.
Do you remember which maturity they have left by any chance?
Um, I do not, but there's only one maturity.
There's, yeah, there's only one maturity where they have bonds left. So if you're interested, you need to call your broker tomorrow, and it doesn't have to be Hilltop, it can be, Hilltop Securities is the underwriter, but any broker.
Okay.
That you have can contact Hilltop, assuming there's any bonds left.
Okay.
And I mean. Alderman are allowed by those things?
Uh.
I didn't hear so.
That, I can't answer.
You cannot, I can answer that.
I mean, we were lucky and we got this done, um, you know, the, the, you know, this is, this is a big hurdle to get, you know, to get this done and get it finished before, uh, you know, things happen with the economy and the, the, potentially the debt ceiling and stuff like that. Those things start to happen, we're, it's out of our control.
Okay, downhill.
Any further questions for Joy? Well, thank you, and great job, and it's a good start.
Let me know if you have any questions as you proceed with the vote.
Maybe next month I'll be able to purchase the bond. Okay, further discussion? Stand a motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, Senator.
Aye.
Felker.
Aye.
Dirk.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murdoth, yes, Croney.
Yes.
Tripple.
Yes.
Bill number thirty-four hundred becomes ordinance number thirty-three oh seven. First reading bill number thirty-four oh one, in ordinance amending chapter two twenty of city of Saint Anne, Missouri code pertaining to weeds. Second reading bill number thirty-four oh one, in ordinance amending chapter two twenty of the city of Saint Anne, Missouri code pertaining to weeds. This is the one we discussed last week in committee, um, was it, you want to rush over real quick, since we got a lot of sectors that wait? Was it nine inches, now it's going to eight?
Correct.
Correct?
Okay.
And what are the other major changes?
And then other than that, uh, the major change is, um, we send the letter out, uh, they, they get four days, the letter's four days, uh, with that letter.
From the time they receive it?
What's that for?
From the time they receive it?
That's probably one of the things that I'm wondering, we're gonna send out the mail, and how long is the mail?
Again, so.
Taken to get delivered.
But it's, it's, it's posting, it's posting every property. So, we're gonna mail to, but we're gonna also post the property, so right there's the four days. Within that four days, they'll have a, a set date on that letter that says when the public hearing. Well, the public hearing, like I said, biweekly, maybe even weekly, depending on how many we have. Um, if they come up to the public hearing and call, we'll see what we can do to help people out, what we can do, if not, then, uh, I'll tell Jim to relook at that property in five days. After that five days is up, if, if the grass has not changed, then Jim will give that to Ryan's guys, so. And then from there on, like I have a saying number five, uh, it doesn't matter if ownership changed or not, we can therefore always tell Ryan to go cut that property if that property remains a nuisance.
But they can call too and avoid the, they're doing.
Absolutely, yeah, like Matt said, communication speed.
What happens if a resident goes on vacation for three weeks and the guy who cuts the grass is, happens to skip because of the rain, this and that?
I mean, you, like Matt said, we got, uh.
So potentially without any sort of court hearing, I mean, we, we, I know what you're saying here, but.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna get it here.
I understand, if, if somebody goes on vacation, and someone goes on with their grass, the neighbor calls in.
If you leave for three weeks, you should pay the rent.
Yeah, hopefully that's when he cuts the grass.
What do you, like, what do you want us to do, Matt? What do you, I mean, what's, what is your solution to this? When people don't cut their grass?
I think, I think that makes a lot of point, as far as somebody potentially getting five hundred dollars grass, cutting weed.
Okay, so what?
No future contact.
So what's the, so, so what's the solution? What's the solution? What is the solution, what is, I mean, what, what should we do?
I'd just like to see the fact of the matter, I don't think. To me, I just don't agree with.
But, but, what, no, what, I mean, what is the solution? I mean, what, what, what are we trying to get at?
Well, currently, if somebody's grass gets too tall, eventually we end up cutting it.
Right.
Then I'll show up to court and cut the grass.
Right.
You guys are just trying to get your, the city's position right now.
No, there was, there was never a court call.
No, this is, this is, this is a nuisance, this is separate from a property being.
We, we wouldn't issue them with someone to come to court.
No, not for grass.
Because, because by time that, if, if, if we did that, it would be the end of summer or fall before they come to court.
He's got something to say over here.
So, all, the issue of court doesn't have the power to order someone to cut their grass. One of the, you know, things that have changed, particularly the, you know, Samuel White and related, that is, there's very limited things a court could do, so if someone has tore grass and excited, and they're not willing to take care of it themselves, and it comes to court, all that can happen is a fine, which doesn't get the grass cut, um, and, you know, just keep going around and around. So right now, the process is already, you have to go through the administrative nuisance hearing, but the, it's a very drawn out long process, which means each time you need to cut grass, it takes a long time to get the grass cut, so the grass gets even longer and it exacerbates the problem. This, uh, this ordinance is based off a statute that, uh, St. Louis County communities are allowed to avail themselves of, which provides one notice in a hearing, but you do it once during each growing season. So, they still have that notice in hearing, but basically it provides a mechanism that allows the city to then stop the grass getting to the, you know, beyond, you know, the one and a half, two feet type lengths, because they don't have to keep going through the very long process that would be applicable to other, you know, um, housing code and other nuisance violation.
So that's a warrant that's been tested?
It is other than you.
It was specifically passed by the state legislature.
Can't talk, I'm in a meeting.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, and Bob, Ryan, Chief, taking all the costs for it, my parents have been dealing with it for like twenty years. Every year, it's probably, every month, they call, on the same house right next to them, my parents are in their seventies, they're, they are about a month. So, you know, the biggest thing is, is I'm one hundred percent for it, because it's ridiculous that a resident, whether it be my parents or not, has to call these guys every month, you know, or a gate when he was doing, to just have kids, twenty-three year old kid and a forty, you know, fifty year old lady, they should be cutting their grass.
Yep.
Ward Tur have had a number.
Any resident has to deal with that.
Let's put it this way.
Ward Tur have had a number of residents that have had to deal with the same issue that he's talking about. It just won't cut it, and, and just somewhere they cut once or so in the long run.
Yeah, and the rats and the rodents and everything else, I see, I see them at my parents' backyard, so.
It's like giving a bunch of teenagers or, or immature people a new property that don't even know that how to even start a lawnmower, I mean, it's just pathetic out there, how dumb they complain.
Well, I mean, and again, and again, I mean, you know, I, this is, this is the part that, that, that I just get disconnected on, because, you know, we work with people all the time, this is, this is one of the people who do not want to even consider being a good neighbor.
Exactly.
And so what's happening is their neighbors are suffering because of it.
That's right.
And their neighbors call us, and, 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 you know, you know, and sometimes they're not very happy, and they want somebody to yell at, so they yell at us.
Okay.
But we can't, you know, again, you know, this, I, I just give it to me, I mean, there is no, there is, there is not another way to do this and get people to cut the grass.
If you've got four weeks of vacation or three, then you need to plan on cutting the grass or working it out to get someone to cut it while you're going, knowing that this thing's gonna grow.
Right, or maybe they can advise the city in advance, a lot of them contact Eric to begin with, a lot of them are going on vacation.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a different way, I'm, I'm super happy about this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, understand a motion for approval. No move.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, Senator.
Aye.
Felker.
Aye.
Dirk. Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murdoth, yes. Croney.
Yes.
Tripple.
Bill number thirty-four oh one becomes ordinance number thirty-three oh eight. First reading bill number thirty-four oh two, in ordinance amending chapter five thirty-five of the city of Saint Anne, Missouri code pertaining to the city's sewer lateral repair policy. Second reading, bill number thirty-four oh two, in ordinance amending chapter five thirty-five of the city of Saint Anne, Missouri code pertaining to the city's sewer lateral repair policy. Discussion.
Is that still gonna be left like we last talked, as far as the residence cost of eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're gonna have one sewer guy that's gonna be on duty when his emergency happens?
Correct, that's the point.
Okay, and then, and then there was, we, the residents, we don't have to go out and get three people, we can get a list, all from?
We will do that, we.
You're gonna do that?
We contact them with a list of four or five plumbers, we haven't gotten that line out yet, but yes.
Yeah, that's, I just want to clarify that, so that's.
I think it's getting away that Top had a monopoly on it, more or less, and they were the only contractors, so. This is giving residents a.
Yeah.
Harvey?
We're the ones that look right, if I'm in a bad, and it's.
That would be. They're the only ones that bid.
Right, so he didn't do it himself, he, he actually had it anyway.
Committing to, you know, committing to, again, you know, with this, the idea behind this is we may get, we may get bidders, or, you know, plumbers submitting proposals that are smaller plumbers, that, that can come out and do a job, but don't want to, you know, they don't have the, the, the ability to commit, manpower to commit, to being the only called partner. You have to have, you know, so many trucks and so many staff and so many stuff, but with this, if you've got an opening and you, you know, you know, you, you know, you're gonna have the ability to, to, to do it next week, you might be a little bit sharper on your, your quote.
And I've had quite a few residents that, I should say a lot, but over the past few years, that just weren't happy, and so they had some personality confidence, so this gives them different options, they don't have to use those now. It's like to have a little variety of.
Yeah, I've never dealt with Top, but I've been related with them, but I've had, you know, the compliments from people on the streets to talk at F works with.
It's just that, you know, this is, you know, we have an issue with the money, and this is attempt to address that while providing, while making sure that, you know, our residents get the best service possible.
Okay, but there's a lot of older people out there, and that's one I vote no on every time you talk about real estate tax on them. So, yeah.
We still got the four thousand cap.
Did you have anything else on your head, Ron?
Uh, no, uh, we'll get the bids, we send out the bid, and whenever we get those back, uh.
Sounds good.
Most big words, yeah.
Further discussion? Seeing none, understand a motion for approval.
No move.
Tiger.
Roll call.
Hey, Senator.
Aye.
Felker.
Aye.
Dirk. Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murdoth, yes. Croney.
Yes.
Tripple.
Yes.
Bill number thirty-four oh two becomes ordinance number thirty-three oh nine. First reading bill number thirty-four oh three, in ordinance authorized the city administrator to enter into an agreement with MTI Distributing for golf course irrigation controller replacement. Second reading bill thirty-four oh three, in ordinance authorized the city administrator to enter into an agreement with MTI Distributing for golf course irrigation controller replacement. Discussion. This is the main control panel, uh, is that in the shed, is that what we're getting?
Right, there's a little shed there behind number nine there, it's, it's the brain of the irrigation system.
Well, the bulk of the cost is the actual zone controllers that are out of each hole, so those are the, that's the device that turns on the, the different, the distribution lines that feed sprinkler heads on each hole, so they talk, they talk to the main brain.
And the main brain's in that shed?
Right, yeah.
Okay. And this is all damaged, it was getting out of system anyway, but I guess.
It, it was getting old, but the flood really did it in.
Flooded it in, yeah. And what's our timeframe, you think we have it up publicly here in a?
Matt, that's probably the next month or two.
They're, the type, the timeline on getting it delivered is a lot quicker than the, 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 so.
Would, I guess.
We'll just have to hand water the best we can.
I mean, April's usually a wet season anyway, so.
Right, yeah, usually will, usually June's when you guys start worrying about drier weather.
Right.
Hopefully we got a couple more months of, uh, spring to get some, some wetness.
Further discussion? Okay, seeing none, understand a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, Senator.
Aye.
Felker.
Aye.
Dirk.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murdoth, yes. Croney.
Yes.
Tripple.
Bill number thirty-four oh three becomes ordinance number thirty-three ten. First reading bill number thirty-four oh four, in ordinance authorized the city administrator to purchase and equip one vehicle from the Missouri State Mid List. Second reading bill number thirty-four oh four. In ordinance authorized the city administrator to purchase and equip one vehicle from the Missouri State Mid List. This is the vehicle down at the golf, uh, the grease meter shed, that got flooded out.
You say one vehicle, I mean.
Yeah.
You just said some of that golf order.
Yeah, it's the pickup truck that, that got flooded the golf course.
Okay, how come you didn't put the golf, the truck in there, so like instead of one vehicle?
Well, it's, it's a vehicle, I mean. Well, it's, it's a vehicle, I mean.
But I, I didn't know if it was a Chevy or Ford or what.
It's a Ford, it's a, it's a, it's a Ford.
It's a ninety-six, ninety-six.
The new one's a Ford, F two fifty.
You wanna make an amendment?
Every place was exactly. The, it was flooded, it was, it was nineteen eighty.
It was a ninety, it was a ninety-six.
I forget the exact year, it's in the nineties, mid-nineties.
Now, they have two fifty, that's not a small vehicle.
It's a three-quarter ton, pretty much a drive.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Understand motion for approval.
No moving.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, singer.
Hi.
Felker.
Hi.
Dirk.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murthollar, yes. Croney.
Yes.
Trippley.
Bill number thirty-four oh four becomes ordinance number thirty-three eleven. First reading, bill number thirty-four oh five, in order to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Gamma Tree Services for street tree removal. Second reading, bill number thirty-four oh five, in order to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Gamma Tree Service for street tree removal. And we have a list of like ten up now, and that'll also be followed up, I guess, once the, the trees removed, the sidewalks.
Like Matt spoke last meeting, they came in cheaper than, you know, this pay, so it sounds like we're gonna get to do some more this year, I guess.
Yeah, that's good news. We got quite a few, I know that.
Uh, we can go for a few summers.
And we're gonna be doing the sidewalks and houses now, right?
Yeah, yeah, we did a few last summer and we're gonna get back and do it again.
How's it going so far? You confident?
Last summer was going good, yeah. They got the hang of it and just, you know, the weather just kinda got to us at the end of the year. Yeah, no, they seem to actually like doing something different too.
Yeah. You're not trying to think that they're gonna be treadmill or anything like that, they're all gonna be flat and sloping off.
They're all, all gonna be.
Now, these are trees in the driveway, I mean, in the walkway, the sidewalks, could they?
These are, these are trees that are right away.
Right.
Some, some of her, some of them may not be impacted sidewalk, but they need to be dead.
Right.
Yeah, so in, in our hazards, in our hazards.
Every single tree on the list is a dead, a dead or dying pin oak with bald leaves.
Yeah, there was a resident last year that actually went and checked every tree in the city and they were just a touch over, I don't know.
Some of the dolls on these things, if you look at them, are, I mean, they're huge.
Is there a lot, I mean, you have an actual formal list?
Yeah.
You, you keep it active?
Yeah, yeah, I can, we have it on like, mark your ass where I'm going and update stuff.
So when people get on that list, do they know where they stand, or do you keep that private?
Can people get on that list?
They have to call their owner.
They, yeah, I mean.
Or they're new here.
They can call, they can ask people this, and we, you know, if they wanna call and see where they stand on, yeah, I can kinda give them that info.
But they call them there, they get faster service, it's all of it.
But don't call them.
Wait a month.
Yeah, I, I try to update it as, as we go.
I just, people think it's, I hear smart comments that, oh, it's a fictitious list, there's no list.
No, I mean, there's, there's an actual list, yeah.
That's what I wanted to hear. All right, further discussion? See, no, no, understand motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Roll call.
Hey, singer.
Hi.
Felker.
Hi.
Dirk.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murthollar.
Yes.
Croney.
Yes.
Trippley.
Bill number thirty-four oh five becomes ordinance number thirty-three eleven. First reading, bill number thirty-four oh six, in order to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Civic Eye for police cad record service. Second reading, bill number thirty-four oh six, in order to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Civic Eye for police cad record services. Discussion. We got a little.
I do. I wanted to make sure that you, Mayor, um, Board and anybody else out here in the public, that they actually have a little bit of a short, brief, um, program. I also, our video to show this is, what about two minutes long? I wanna bore everyone. I also have, um, Terrence, uh, what's Terrence's last name? Pruitt, sorry, that he is from Civic Eye. He's the guy that we've been dealt, um, been dealing with. Kristy Star, will you stand up for a second? Just having a whole, that, um, that way. Uh, so, just the public, so anybody that is not aware, Kristy Star is our Kalia accreditation manager. She, uh, helps with all the software and so on. And I know that Matt, you take a lot of hit, uh, for a lot of things, and that's part of being a city administrator, but I personally wanna tell you from our side of the police department, we know the technology, we know how much of a pain within, uh, in the area it is. And thank you for doing that, staying up with that technology, that we're coming with you. You give us enough respect along with Board too, to, to listen to us. So, that being said, we'll play this video, and then any questions that you have or any kind of.
If you're a small agency and you're looking to make change, keep pushing forward. I'm Bill Rell, I'm the police chief on LaFollette, Tennessee. I've been with LaFollette PD for seven years. It's important for smaller agencies to have a records management system like Civic Eye to move into the twenty-first century.
It's user-friendly and it's an easy program, and you don't have to have a large agency to be able to utilize it. Doesn't matter how many users you have, it's gonna do the same thing for four officers as opposed to thirty-five officers. So it's beneficial for the department, doesn't matter what size it is.
We would have paperwork scattered everywhere. You'd, you'd have to keep up with multiple reports, multiple case files. Uh, with this system, everything is right, right in front of you.
It allows our officers to be in the field longer. We don't have to bring the officers into, as, uh, they had in the past where they were making the reports, we don't have to bring them in to reinvent those reports on the computer system. They can do that on their feet.
The biggest breakthrough using Civic RMS is having more time to patrol and do your job as a police officer, and not having to spend time in the station, report, writing reports.
It's one of the best processes that I've purchased since I've been chief at this police department. It's been a very valuable tool for us. It's a wonderful records management system. As Civic Eye grows, our agency's gonna grow. We're gonna continue to look toward the programs that they offer, and we're gonna move to utilize those programs. It's gonna make this a much better police department, and we're gonna be able to serve the community in a much more formidable way.
Thanks, George. Um, so with that being said, I wanted to make sure, we have Terrence here on FaceTime. He is in North Carolina right now. And, uh, Kristy Star knows a lot about the information with this records manage, uh, management system. But I can tell you that the system that we have right now is called ITI Omnigo. They switched hands. Uh, we actually dropped them about ten years ago. Uh, the service was better, and, uh, that changed hands again, and it is horrible. And that system is, this new system is so important for us. We get done with our reports, you see the officers back out on the street. There were many times with this program, if you don't save it in enough time and et cetera, uh, you lose all the information. That officer has to come back and, uh, and then restart all of this, uh, information again for report writing. And also, I just wanna make sure that you guys know it's something that I believe in so much in this product, um, the FBI National Academy, that, uh, they endorse that. And so their logo's at the bottom. It's very, very important when I see that, um, as a police chief and the networking that's been, uh, been done all across the world. And if you guys approve this and it's accepted, uh, I'm actually gonna go to St. Louis County Crosswind Attorney's Office and meet with Wes Sebel and say, hey, listen, I think that if we're all used to this, we can all, uh, collaborate a little bit better and then be able to share information a little bit easier. So, um, I'll keep you guys posted on that. If there are any questions whatsoever, Kristy's a wealth of information, and so is Terrence.
It's basically like each Tope has, you know, the, the same thing, okay?
Correct.
No different changes? Okay.
Zero.
Thank you.
Sounds like a good program.
Yep.
It's amazing.
Anybody from, from the public, I wanna make sure that you see what your police department's doing. We know that you can't come to neighborhood watch the last day of the month on Thursdays a lot of times, so I wanted to make sure from the report from the chief and stuff, that, uh, that we're informing the residents a little bit about what your police department's doing for you. Any questions at all? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Further questions? See, no, no, understand motion for approval.
No move. Second.
Roll call.
Hey, singer.
Hi.
Felker.
Hi.
Dirk.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Murthollar.
Yes.
Croney.
Yes.
Trippley.
Yes.
Bill number thirty-four oh six becomes ordinance number thirty-three four.
Thank you, Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Hope it all works out for you. Approval of monthly warrant, or reports and warrants, discussion? See, no, uh, we'll, understand motion for approval.
No move. Tiger.
All fair?
Hi.
Post? Motion carried. Public comment on non-agenda items. Public comment on non-agenda items. Does anybody wish to speak? Right ahead, sir. Prove yourself. Did you fill out the? Did you fill out the form that?
No, my first time.
Oh, that's all right. Uh, just give Chris your name and address.
Tim Conlon. C O N N E L L Y. One oh five, eight oh, Hobbit Avenue. Got it right there, she's scared of it.
That's the reason I'm here, is about the street. For two items. First, I was at that meeting, I think, like, three years ago with the city of St. Anne's.
What?
Down at the, um, community center.
No, I didn't.
And it was talked about, and, you know, and then it was brought to the people, the voters. To me, that was a setup to fail at the time. Not your guys' doing, but it wasn't, nobody voted. I mean, if you look at the numbers of how many people in St. Anne are eligible to vote, and how many people came out, that was a bad vote. That was set up to fail badly.
Am I missing what you said you were talking about at the beginning? What are we talking about?
Hobbit Avenue, the street. Uh, yes, exactly right. And I mean, so I was there, and I know we had said, we had talked about it, and I just felt that that was a, that was just a setup to fail at that time. And in the meantime, I see these streets that are being repaired that are way better than Hobbit, and our street is atrocious. And there's other ones out there. I drove around. I know St. Sean is horrible. I drove down there. That is bad. Lips is bad. I drove up.
Those are, those are, you know, those are streets that have to be rebuilt. So that means your street has to be dug out. So we close the street, we come in and we dug, we dug the street once, come back in, put, uh, uh, rock, uh, uh, and then multiple overlays of asphalt. We actually, we, we built you a new street. That's what, that's what Hobbit is gonna require. We, you know, we have money to do basically one of those streets a year, where we have to come in and rebuild the street. Um, so, you know, those are, those are those streets that, that are gonna take more than, you know, we've only done, we've only been rebuilding streets under the DDD. This is our third year, so.
Which, what's the main one this year that's being rebuilt that way?
Uh, the, the main one this year is Ashby of, um, of the, basically the golf course that's dead.
And St. John's.
And St. John's.
Those are concrete.
Last year was G M.
Those are a little bit different.
But we're reconstruction.
But wouldn't it have been smart at the time when the city, uh, when the water system came in and put in all that brand new, when the street was already half tore up, that we could have worked the deal and said, hey, you guys have to pave something anyway?
We don't have, but, but, we didn't have the budget.
Or pass, right?
So, I mean, you have to understand, you know, the streets, your street is going to be, you know, probably a six to seven hundred thousand dollar street, is that. Uh, 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 it could be, if, you know, by the time, you know, with the rate prices are going up, you know, it could be more than that, so.
I understand that. And I mean, so how long do we wait? I mean, you guys don't repair my vehicle when I, when I, my tires get destroyed. My shocks, everything, you know, and I have, you know.
Got the same problem.
I know I went by your street too.
I mean, unfortunately.
I didn't care.
The only way, the only way to do what you're suggesting, where we go in and we would have been able to redo all the streets at one time, was a bond issue, that the city tried that probably about two thousand and ten. And the residents said, the residents said no. So, you know, what we did was we, you know, we looked at it and said, okay, this problem isn't going away. You know, what can we do? How can we raise the money to do this? It may not be, it may not be as fast as everybody wants, but it's the way that, it's the only way we can do it. So, I mean, what we did was we came up with the, the Transportation Development District. I mean, you know, this is, this was something that was never done in, in St. Louis, in the state, basically, where the Transportation Development District was overlay into the corporate boundaries of the city. We're the first city in the state of Missouri to do that, to get it in place. You know, unfortunately, we had about a year when the tax went into effect and then COVID hit. So we kinda lost, we kinda lost the first year because, because the, the money didn't come in, because the, the businesses were shut down, and the, um, contractors weren't working. So, you know, we've only been, we've only been doing this two years, where we've been actually budgeting billions of dollars for street work. So we're two years into the program, and yes, unfortunately, it's gonna take some time to get to the, to get to the streets that need to be rebuilt, because, you know, they're, they're incredibly expensive. We just don't have the money in the rest of the general fund budget to, to come up with another million dollars so we can do two streets a year. It just, it just isn't gonna work. And then we, and then when, then when you get to the point, you know, one of the things that people don't understand is the, the, the amount of work and, and, and time that it takes to actually get to the point where you can build the street. You have to, we spend a good six to eight months prior to bidding it out, getting the construction documents together, then we have to bid it out. Then that, that, that project has to be finished. Uh, so we just can't just turn the contractor and use and say, good luck, go build the street. We gotta have, we gotta have a qualified engineer, uh, you know, to do that, and those things are expensive. It's about thirty-three percent of the cost of a street are, you know, a reconstruction street are, is the design and construction management of the cost. So it's not just buying rock and gravel and asphalt and stuff like that. So I, I, I understand your, your issue. Um, you know, we are, you know, you know, we're finally to the point where, you know, we can dedicate, you know, the, the kind of money, uh, to be able to do one of these streets that need, that needs to be reconstructed. Streets that you're referring to, the ones that aren't, is, are quoted as in bad shape, you know, we have, you, basically, you can take all of our streets and divide them in thirds. We have, you know, these are rough numbers. So you have, you basically have a third of the streets that either need to be, uh, rebuilt or, or, or.
Or reconstructed.
Or, well, total reconstruction, or they need an old, they need a, they need a, a, a significant mill and overlay. You have a third of the streets that are streets that are, are, we can, we can essentially overlay doing, uh, using a, a product called, uh, Noda Chip, which is a, that's what was done on Ashby Road. Then we have a third of the streets that, uh, primarily the streets that are in the neighborhoods and don't get a lot of traffic, um, that, that we can, you know, that we can, uh, 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 you know, utilize another, uh, 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 product like Repli or something like that on. And the idea is, is those streets, although they're done, you know, they may not look bad, the idea is, is we don't want them to get any worse. We want them to stay the way they are and keep them in suspended animation, because if they fail, if they start to go bad, you know, that, they get moved into the rebuilding column. And we're, we're never gonna be able to dig ourselves out of this hole. So, so yes, streets do get, you know, the streets that, that have some work being done on them are being done to keep them from failing. And so we can spend, the bulk of the money, we can spend on, 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 on the streets that have to be either building or overlaid or, or, um, uh, dug out and replaced, so.
Who's prioritizing then? Which ones get done first?
We have, we, we have, we have a pavement plan that a professional engineer goes out and inspects, inspects all of the streets and puts the information into a program called Micro Paper, which is a program that is developed by the Corps of Engineers. So he goes out, he measures cracking, he notes, you know, the streets are, are, are engineers, when they walk a street, they can basically tell you what's going on with the street. The other thing we've done is we've cored all of our streets, um, you know, knowing that, 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 that this, you know, we were gonna get this thing passed. The city did spend some money to have all the streets cored, so we know what's underneath the street, because of a lot of cases, that determines on, that determines a lot on what we can, can and can't do with the street. The street has got a good, uh, base on it, base material underneath the street. Um, that means that basically we can scrape the street off, build it, and overlay it. If we, if the street, you know, doesn't have a good base on it, and it's, it's, it's failing, then it has to be dug up and, and, and replaced. So he comes out, does the inspections, puts all the information into a program, it ranks all of the streets based on, um, uh, the inspection data, uh, the type of street they are, and then that is what we use to determine what streets get put where on the list.
Can you tell me where Hobbit is?
I can, I don't have it off the top of my head. I mean, I, I.
I mean, at that meeting.
If, if she's got your contact information, I can tell, I can, I can go in and, 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 and ask the engineer where that stands on them. If, if she's got your contact information, I can tell, I can, I can go in and, 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 and ask the engineer where that stands on the list.
Okay. To fully understand why we got the hole we're in, we had, we were on the, every year we're doing some of these streets, but we have probably a good six, eight years where we didn't do it.
Yeah, there, I mean.
Didn't do any streets.
This was, this was, this was at the, the end of, this was from, this was before my time, so from about nineteen ninety-five through two thousand and four, the city didn't do any streets.
That's why we got the hole, that's, we're trying to close all of that hole.
Financially was, was, you know, there was one year where the city was about bankrupt. So, you know, cities.
That's why we're trying to, we are trying, we do have to dedicate funds. I wish I could tell you, your street's gonna be done next year, I can't remember.
Well, the other problem is, you know, Hobday is such a main thoroughfare, and that's, that's my other quote tonight. We, I mean, I, St. Anne Police Force is great, but we gotta do something. Man, they're speeding on our street a lot.
I'll respond to that, um, at this, right after you go.
Okay, all right, so, all right, I mean, that's my.
If you got your contact information, I can, we, we can get you the information about where, you know, what rank your street is and where to call them.
All right, well, thank you for listening.
Thank you. I feel your frustration. Excuse me, man, I have. Anybody else wish to speak on non-agenda items? Is anybody, Chief?
Uh, I'll go at the end. Ed?
I was just gonna mention, I have all that data in the truck right now, so.
We got it up in the office too. They'll contact them. Okay, there's nobody else wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Hey, Chief, you got it?
Okay. So, I gave one, I gave one to Chris, so she has it for public record, and also, uh, from here on out, just so that you know, and we'll talk about this just in a minute. The public will have them, and I'll put them in the back too, for their records and their information. Um, this is probably actually the most serious. Um, so we're gonna make sure the public knows, and to the response to your question. So the number one complaint on the police side is speeding, uh, speeding vehicles, traffic violations. It's spiraled out of control, and a lot of that, Amy and I have done a great job talking about that from Senate Bill Five. We are writing tickets, we are enforcing. I'm not, I don't wanna blame the court system, but there is no accountability. You see what's happening with no plates and so on. I'll give the same example I gave for Neighborhood Watch. I stopped, uh, a resident, okay, and he was issued a citation. His plate came back from two thousand seventeen. I said his or her's name, and, uh, and we also talk about this in Board of Police Commissioners. I, you know, I said, well, he or she, I don't understand, you caught my attention because you were speeding down the road, first of all, where he lives. And, uh, and then two thousand seventeen, he says, Aaron, I will tell you, he goes, it, just write me the ticket. It's easier because, to get the ticket, because I owe over four thousand dollars to the state. He can't get his vehicle registered, you can't make him, that used to be an arrestable offense, even for an infraction. Now they say it's not, you know, it's not, it's, because it's an infraction, it's not an arrestable offense. So he goes to court, and what do you think the fine is? A hundred and ten bucks, that's including court, court costs. So he's, he's had one a year, so he's only had to pay a little over four hundred dollars. And so I use that example, that, that is how it's spiraled out of control, but your police department decides to answer any calls. So here's what I came up with. I said, and I've been talking about this for the last six months, it's been very hard to hire policemen. Don't wanna use that as an excuse, we go down, three or four policemen. And so what we did is we are taking an unmarked, and I don't mind telling the public, we're taking an unmarked white Durango, and we are selecting a process where those officers who put in for it, they are going to rotate every two months. So that, that, that is all they're going to do, is nothing but traffic. So when I get that complaint from a resident, I can say, hey, listen, you're going over right now, and you're gonna go and sit there for at least an hour. And what's that, what that's gonna represent is asking residents if we can back that car up into, like, Hank, um, and you know Hank, Ivan, over on St. Francis down the street from me, there's nowhere you can sit where you're gonna be able to catch anybody, because by the time you go up there, they're gonna see, maybe not at first, because it's a, it's an unmarked white Durango, but over the course of time, when they get to know that car, they're gonna do what they, they gotta do, until, you know. So I think at the very beginning, it's very important that we're doing that, but Hobday is Brad Ham, Officer Ham, lives there, and you know, and exactly right across from you. And so he, he knows it too. And so instead of turning a blind, a blind eye, I wanted to make sure that just like what we did for Charlak, and I apologize, I didn't think of it till now, um, these sheets, one is your calls for service every month, and what kind of calls those are, so that you can be informed. And then the next one, the next sheet back in there, is, uh, the streets that the tickets were written on. So I want you to know, if you have a street, and let's say you live on Hobday, it should, it should show how many tickets there are. Then on top of that, then on the, the triple sheet on the back, uh, every month, we'll have these in the back. It will, it will show how many tickets were written on that street. So, and what, and, and what the violations were for. So you have all these categories that the public can be, uh, be, be more aware of, and, and so what we're doing to show you. At that point, I don't control the, the court system. After the Ferguson report came out, the courts and the police department had to be completely separate. So we actually just talked to, uh, the assistant, um, to the prosecuting attorneys. And, you know, some good reasons, you know, were, uh, to stop anything from going on, ticket fixing, blah, 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 uh, so to make it a little bit more professional. But I can tell you, and even with, uh, Ed, Sluss up here, uh, the attorney here, uh, you know, they do a really good job doing that. If people take it to court, at that point, it's your judge and so on that determines what the fine is. And I can tell you, uh, that there are a lot of verbal warnings given to our residents, and some of our residents are the biggest, the biggest violators, so what's going on? But, but that being said, after three or four times of that catching that resident, I'm not naming any names, not fair, um, he or she usually gets a ticket. So we're the first ones to complain, but then we're also the first ones that if we get pulled over, we want that free. And I'm not talking about anybody in here. So that being said, this is what my answer to that is. You will have that information firsthand. You can call me up anytime. You also have, I think, well, you have my personal cell phone, and, uh, and then you have that information, the public does too, so that we'll keep it on record here. Uh, you have the report from the chief, which I started, uh, this month, thanks to the mayor and the board for allowing me to do that, just like we do down in Charlak. And if any questions whatsoever, look out for a white Dodge Durango, that's all, that's all they're gonna be doing, is writing tickets on your street. And that being said, um, they are gonna write that, and I know that the call volume of complaints and so on from residents will probably, uh, go up, but it's number one complaint. That, and then, uh, usually once every three months, we have usually juveniles or drug users who are breaking into cars, lifting up on, uh, unlocked door handles. And usually now, they're not stealing change, they're stealing firearms. So wanna make sure, and, uh, I actually see the president of our police commissioner, uh, we have a meeting Wednesday, where we're gonna be talking about that. I always get their vote on how we're going to do that. That's Mr. Simpson in the back, Commissioner Simpson, and, uh, so I wanna make sure that the public knows this is going to be my number one answer to that. Your officers are writing lots of tickets, so I'll leave this in the back. If you need copies, we can make copies, call us, we'll get it to you tomorrow, we'll even hand deliver it, uh, to your residents. Okay, that's number one. Any questions about that? Anything that I might be missing, Mark, uh, Mark has as a leader of this department? Yes, move.
Can that be made available online, like the, um, meeting agendas are?
Yes, that's a great idea, so we'll start with that too. Now, just, I wanna add on that, there are some more serious crimes that happen. I only share that during Neighborhood Watch, so if you want something like that, or you call me personally, but I'm not gonna, uh, share St. Anne's dirty laundry. Nobody needs to know that, um, you know, when it is important, I always put out to the board and the mayor, uh, and the Board of Police Commissioners, when we have serious stuff go on, but I don't think, uh, the public needs to know about ten lawn mowers that were stolen within a year's period of time. So this is perfect idea. Perfect. Any other questions, anything?
What about parking on the sidewalk?
So we have that too. The biggest problem that we have, the complaint, is either on Pear Tree, that's number two. Number one complaint is on eighty Road. So if you call that, that's.
There's people that are on eighty Road that park in front of the sign.
Correct.
Get on that, get on that, got the sidewalk blocked with the sign.
Correct.
You know, it's just unbelievable. On my street, I left walks in the morning. Some mornings, she's got walking people's yards around out the street, because the cars are black, completely black in the sidewalk.
Um, Dan Murphy and Ivan Sparks always call, we always deal with that. I will just be honest, as residents, we try, because that is what they bought, sometimes they don't think about when their brand new homeowner is buying that. They have parties and so on, can't park anywhere, uh, so we've been dealing with that. So we have written some tickets, but on that, we're always giving them an opportunity, hey, listen, move your, move your cars, this is the complaint, so. But we deal with that all the time. I can tell you, uh, usually it's older Murphy about twice a year, it's about double that. With Ivan, either one of them sharing the information, they call all the time on that certain, yes, sir. Any other questions, reference this traffic unit? Okay, that is going to start Monday, so just look out for a white Dodge Durango with, uh, with, uh, that's an unmarked car. So I'll be the first. I'll leave this in the back, uh, second thing I'll, second thing I wanna talk about is during Neighborhood Watch, I see out there, there's a couple people, but it's gonna be redundant, so apologize. But this is very important, I wanna make sure that Mayor, the Board of Alderman, that you guys get to see this. Last, was it last week or the week before? The week before, uh, we made it mandatory, I made it mandatory with these fine gentlemen, I'll introduce them in a minute. Uh, we actually said, hey, listen, I saw the trend in a magazine and talking to these guys, uh, for school shootings. And I will tell you, this sounds horrible, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. I wanted to make sure that your police department was ready for that for an active shooter. You see it all the time, it's at least two or one time a week where a Walmart or a school shooting, and then right after we did the training, the Nashville shooting happened. And so, uh, and, and, and that really hit me. I have a video, if you do not wanna see it, it's around two minutes or less, wanted to make sure that you saw, we trained exactly like this. Your department did that, uh, using our fine guys, there were seven or eight of them. Uh, first of all, Aaron Baker, I actually stole him, he is with the U.S. Marshals attached, so we pay a salary, but anytime he's in charge of your SWAT team, we call it Special Response Team to, uh, to keep it a little lighter, uh, but it is SWAT team. And, uh, and so he is in charge of filling that unit with, um, usually we have about twelve guys in our department. And we started opening it up to departments around us. We wanna know that if a smaller department in that school is under attack, we already know, I'll just be honest, this is no dig at anyone, we're gonna make it to Holman with, because it's basically right near our headquarters, and our town's a little bit, uh, smaller. Where Richmond has almost eighteen square miles, we're a little under five, makes a big difference. So that being said, uh, Lieutenant Ravens, will you play that? I need to move. Shut those, just make sure those lights on. Less than three minutes.
Give me, give me three, let's get three. Let's go, I need three, four. One more. Let's go.
I do apologize, in one of the scenes, here we're going to see a small child on the ground, but it's blurred out. But that's how serious this is, I want the public to know that, that we are ready.
Bathroom, bathroom, small bathroom.
Max, let's go. Door, door, whip me, whip me.
Open the door.
Max.
Yes.
Open it, I got it, I got it.
Those commands that you're hearing is exactly what we did. Whether it was one of us just getting up there, that's how we're trained now. Used to be that you would get a whole bunch of people to go, that is no more the case. Who's ever there, you get, you're trained now, you go and you stop the threat.
Take this, take this. No, that's wrong. Take this door. Take this door, take it.
A minute left. There's the victim, they're gonna step over on the ground. That is the shooter right now, shooting, down at police cars and, and, and children in the parking lot. Matt, please turn the lights back on. Matt, thank you. Um, why, why I show that is, uh, is to be prepared. This is what we're facing as police officers, this is what you are facing as a public. So as gruesome as that is, uh, I apologize, but I, that was an, an excellent presentation of exactly how we train. We would want, one step further, not only when we were at Rittner, when we were at Drummond and Pattonville, uh, I praise both of those school districts. They could have done what other school districts are, and not letting the police in there. So we are, we are, we are very familiar about those buildings. There's also an app called Crisis Manager, that everyone, from me on down, is mandatory. We loaded that on our phones, so that we know exactly the map, we practice that. So if they're just sitting in their car, sometimes it appears that, you know, they're not doing anything, I can tell you, I can love to see who's loading on, who's doing what, made that mandatory. So I'm sorry if that affected anybody here, I wanted to make sure that, uh, that Mayor and soon incoming mayor and all the board members that you know, that we take this very, very serious, still have, uh, ready kids that are about ready to, to get into school, and there's a lot of people here who still have kids. Always taken that serious, uh, ever since I got hired here in ninety-seven, and I'm not gonna stop that until, uh, forever. But especially while I'm, while I'm a leader at this police department, you know firsthand, uh, what we're doing. We're also going to show other things that we can't discuss right now in front of the Board of Police Commissioners, to make sure that, uh, that they're, they're voting on, on the correct information about what we're asking for, which, just real quick, and, uh, we'll end this. We, uh, when, when our special response team, SWAT team is serving search warrants and all, uh, that stuff, we are looking at a robot that used to cost around thirty to forty thousand dollars. Once we get the approval, which is only a little over three thousand, where we, where we found a deal, we're going in front of the police commissioners Wednesday night, and, uh, get their approval, we'll then ask the, uh, city admin and the board and the mayor, um, for your permission to look at that and see if you'll approve that. Uh, take that very serious, I'm sorry, thank you again.
It's a, it's a robot, it's called Navitar, and basically we can drive that in, it has a monitor, it has two sets of cameras, one of them you can drive with, and one that does a three sixty up top, spins around, so, can you guys hear me all right? A little under the weather. Um, and we can speak to it and we can hear it, so we can hear what's going on, and we can tell, talk to somebody inside as well. Uh, it gives us the ability to get an eye on what's going inside before we have to stick somebody inside there. It costs on average about twenty-three thousand dollars, right off the bat, outfit and SRT officer. So if we can have something to this magnitude, and I gotta give credit to Joe, Joe found it, Joe's my assistant team commander, uh, don't know what I'd do without him. The other one just walked out, he's got a call going on.
That, that guy that he left is Lieutenant Carey, if anybody doesn't know him, and he's, uh, second, third in charge of the, uh, special response team. I actually got the pleasure of meeting Joe Benny, he was a former trainer for the St. Louis Blues. He's an excellent firearms, and he can throw a mean punch too, so. Great guy, these guys are awesome at what they do, a great team. that. Great guy. These guys are awesome at what they do. Got a great team.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Does, does the public have anything? Sorry I had to say that. Just wanna make sure. You guys got the information from the record, records management system and knowing that your grandchildren or children, uh, including you going to even such as a Walgreens on the Rock Road or a restaurant or something dead. I wanna make sure that you, you feel safe along with any visitors coming here to safety. So, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
It's working.
Does anybody else have anything? Anybody call likely, get out of the vote? The, uh, we get a turnout? Don't seem to get anybody voting in April, but we'll keep on. I understand motion for adjournment.
When, when are you ladies going around the table?
No, it's, uh.
I have a, I have a question for you, Jerry. What are you talking that way? I didn't hear it this.
Okay, you have the floor, sir.
I have any more tonight you're gonna be here? Well, my question is.
I'll be the next committee meeting and then I'll preside over the May meeting, get started and then I'll.
Okay, I, I wanna make sure that you're here because I have a few words I wanna say.
I'll be ready.
It's been a pleasure. And I won't wait to tell you that.
That's fine. We got time to pick it up. I understand motion for adjournment. We are adjourned.